Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vospos.
Here.
Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhout.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
We're all here, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the faithful with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. I would ask those with cell phones if you would please put them on vibrate or silence them, we would appreciate it. Before we get to the consent agenda, we have just a couple items that we'd like to bring up. City Manager Oliver Turner, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. At this time, I would respectfully request that Captain Mike Whitney join us. Thank you for coming up here, Captain. As the Commission is aware, Captain Whitney is about to conclude his tenure with the city at the end of this month, and I thought it would be appropriate for his commitment and time served for the city to recognize his employment. And just for the Commission's awareness, Captain Whitney was hired as a patrol officer on March 27th, 1994. He has been with the city over 22 years. He was promoted to detective in September of 1995 and promoted to captain on July 29th, 2011, with his last day of employment being June 30th. He's been active with the Fraternal Order of Police and has participated in many community activities, such as Fraternal Order of Police Torch Run for the Special Olympics and has been the recipient of several departmental recognitions and commendations. In my time working with Captain Whitney, I've known him to be a steadfast public servant, a consummate professional, and someone who brings a very calming presence to what can be very tense situations. It's been a joy to work with him, and we'd like to read off a letter signed by Mayor Vospos as well as myself. "Dear Mike, congratulations and thank you for your years of service with the City of Sioux-St. Marie Police Department. We realize that our employees are our greatest asset, and we are delighted to honor your dedicated service and commitment to the City of Sioux-St. Marie. It is our employees who uphold our mission, demonstrate our vision of working for a better future for our community, and make us the passionate organization we are today. The success of our organization is a direct result of your efforts and dedication. Your commitment to personal and professional integrity is the differentiating factor that sets us apart from other communities. As you reach this milestone in your career and set your sights on future goals, please take a moment to reflect upon your accomplishments and take pride in knowing that you were an important member of our team. Please accept our heartfelt thanks and good wishes on your future career endeavors. And certainly, in the profession of police work, which is a unique profession and a very demanding one, I would just like to express my thanks to Captain Whitney for his service to the city. Thank you very much, Captain."
Go, Pat, go. Okay, great. Secondly, this past week, reading the evening news, and also, we also had Officer Brian Mattson, who just happens to be here tonight, save some ducklings in a catch basin, and we have here a special guest that we'd like to provide you with an award. And we have kind of a shirt-tail relative of his, our City Commissioner Gage. Well, because Seymour can't speak, but Seymour the Sea Duck from Lake Superior State. And if we could have Dan Wires also from DPW, they also were involved in that catch basin and the ducklings, why don't you come on up?
So Officer Mattson, on behalf of the duck community in Sioux-St. Marie, of whom I'm speaking on behalf of tonight, and its most prominent member Seymour the Sea Duck, we want to thank you for your selfless commitment to helping the ducks of this town, and thank you so much for going above and beyond.
We need a picture, a picture right there with Commissioner Gage. Bring your camera, Scotty? We got one, we got one right here. There we go.
Very good.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Seymour. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Full acres. Okay, that, item number one, is public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, hearing done, we'll go on to item number two, the consent agenda. Assistant City Manager Troyer.
Under the consent agenda, A minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of June 6, 2016. Recommended action, approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of June 6, 2016. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A, airport advisory board of May 12, 2016. Recommended action, accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. B, appointments and resignations. One, appointment to the planning commission. Recommended action, confirm the mayor's appointment of Derek Knight to the planning commission to fill the balance of a term to expire April 19, 2017. Item C, communications. One, from the Historic Structures Management Committee, authorization of administrative agreement with LeSue D. St. Marie Historic Sites. Recommended action is to approve year two of the agreement between the City of Sioux-St. Marie and Sioux Historic Sites. Item two under communications is also from the Historic Structures Management Committee, authorization of an operational agreement with Chippewa County Historical Society. Recommended action is to approve year two of the agreement between the City of Sioux-St. Marie and the Chippewa County Historical Society as presented. Item three, from the planning commission, recommendation to approve a resolution to vacate with retention of utility easements, the full width of the west 140 feet of the unimproved West Fifth Avenue right-of-way between Block 1 and Block 8, Cargill's addition. Recommended action is to schedule a public hearing on a resolution to vacate with the retention of utility easements, the full width of the west 140 feet of the unimproved West Fifth Avenue right-of-way between Block 1 and Block 8 of Cargill's addition for the July 5, 2016 regular city commission meeting. Item D, special orders of business. One, first reading of an ordinance to affirmatively further fair housing in the City of Sioux-St. Marie. Recommended action, introduce for a first reading an ordinance prohibiting and making unlawful discrimination in housing and/or real property, and schedule a second reading of this ordinance for the July 5, 2016 city commission meeting. Item E, city manager's report. One, authorization of a resolution adopting a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force against nonviolent civil rights demonstrators. Recommended action, approve a resolution adopting a policy preventing the use of excessive force against nonviolent civil rights demonstrators in compliance with CFR 91.255, and direct the police chief to implement this resolution by amending applicable police department procedures. Item two, approval of a budget amendment for Prospect Alley project. Recommended action, approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $1,984 for the Prospect Alley project, and transfer funds from road contingency in the amount of $2,943.
Okay, thank you. Is there any Commissioner who would like something further explained on the consent agenda? Commissioner Gary.
Item C1 is a contract with Sioux Historic Sites, and I am on the Sioux Historic Sites Board, so I would like to abstain from our consent agenda.
Question to the City Attorney, yes.
That'll be fine.
Okay, is C1?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Twardy.
A move that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved to support, are there any questions? I guess just a question, maybe the City Manager can just clarify the authorization of prohibiting the use of excessive force against, that's something that we've traditionally done, and it just got to be on the, as a matter of fact, a written procedure?
That is correct, Mayor. At this time, the police department does have procedures for this. However, because the City of Sioux-St. Marie was a recipient of both the urgent needs grant as well as the CDPG facade improvement grants, this is a policy that we are required to adopt in accordance with the grant terms and provisions.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Osterhout?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I just find it sort of ridiculous in the sense that we take grant money like that and we have to reaffirm that we have this policy in place just to receive federal monies, and I just thought, it was just sort of on the crazy side.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Vospos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item three, communications. A, from the Downtown Development Authority, recommendation to approve an air and light easement with National Office Products.
Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. On this matter, DDA Director Nupper is planning to make a presentation to the City Commission.
Evening, Justin.
Evening.
Hello, everybody.
Maybe you have an idea, before you start that, maybe any wind damage from the excessive winds that we've had here this afternoon?
There was some crazy stuff going on. Not as bad as Lake State, I don't think we lost any trees, I saw they lost some up there, but we had a good couple pieces of somebody's building floating around on Portage Street, so we cleaned that up about 3:00, big metal siding. So if anybody needs metal siding, call the DDA, we have it. And then, we have a couple flagpoles that are dangling, so I'm trying to get tomorrow morning, get those up and fixed in front of a cut above, but otherwise, it's just been, it was a sandstorm downtown, we have a lot of, a lot of stuff floating around.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, the alien light easement at National Office Products, it's the first time I've ever gone through anything like this, and I'm very happy to have National Office Products downtown, they're one of our largest employers downtown with, I think, close to 20 employees, and they've been doing a major remodel of their interior, both buildings, the Court Street building as well as the Ashman Street building. And things were going according to plan until, I believe, a few months ago, during their construction, one of their upper-floor apartments caught fire, and they had to kind of change course on a lot of things, and from what I gather, you know, completely remodel and bring up to code many of their apartments because of the complete, you know, fire that happened in the gut job that they had to do on some of the apartments. So, one of the things that was found lacking by the building department and state, you know, state code was proper egress, meaning, you know, exit from some of the apartments, they only had the doors out into the hallways, and then front and rear windows, but according to my understanding of the state code, which is very limited, you have to have windows out of your bedroom, windows out of your bedroom window unless you have a sprinkler system in your units, which is quite cost prohibitive for, you know, retrofitting old units. So, the National Office Products chose to explore the window installation in some of their units, but right outside of the windows, proposed windows, is a city-owned piece of property, which we've had a lot of discussions about over the years, and so my understanding of the whole situation is in order to put windows in your building, you must receive some sort of easement to allow someone to escape onto property that you have permission to escape on. And then, secondly, you know, a future, a future plan for that site couldn't necessarily block those windows without some sort of agreement from both parties. So, so it's a little bit of a change, of course, for, for a lot of things in that area, in that little pocket park next to their building, you know, from my, from my angle, the more I've been thinking about it from a downtown development standpoint, we want to see our downtown housing utilized to its fullest potential. We have four existing units that will be able to be rented more easily, more readily, and at a market rate that will attract good quality tenants downtown by adding these windows and giving people a way to, you know, be safe in those units. So, that's my recommendation, we've done a lot of looking at how that little park next door could fit future, future construction or future development. One of the ways that we looked at it is about 37, 40 feet wide in that, in that place where the old building burned down, and so we have many units, many, many two-story buildings that are about 30, 30 to, 25 to 35 feet wide, which would still leave the official 10-foot, 1-inch area for a sidewalk or something to go in between the two buildings. And of course, you could always look at future ways when a developer comes in to maybe work with National Office to add sprinklers or something along those lines. So, there's, I don't think it's a, you know, it's any sort of major roadblock for that parcel to be developed in the future, it still allows us to do that, just maybe a little bit of a slight modification while allowing one of our downtown property owners to expand and do better with their current building.
Thank you. Any questions of Justin? Commissioner Bauer.
So moved that the...
What? I'm just thinking.
Oh. Because you said Commissioner Bauer, then I heard something else. Sorry. So moved the commission approved the execution of that easement as detailed and presented by Justin.
Support.
It's been moved to support, are there any questions? Commissioner Gage.
I'm sure that we're all going to probably support this, not to speak for everybody, but I think this is a great innovative way to think about how to solve a problem, and I'm super committed to getting more market rate apartments downtown, so I think that for the future of our downtown, we need to have more people living in our downtown, so getting this passed and implemented, and I think it sets up a good framework for future improvements.
Excellent. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Vospos.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, item number four is the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the City Manager's report, would provide for the approval of a change order for CSO Phase C-3 with Baco Construction to add a portion of Lion Street and West Spruce into the project. On this matter, City Engineer Basista will present to the City Commission.
Okay, thank you. Evening, Lena.
Good evening, Mayor. At the last meeting, we, you approved a change order, large deductive change order, it was an interim balancing change order to the project, and since then, we've also done some further analysis of the total status of the project, and have determined that we do have additional funding to add back into the project and add further to the project. As you may recall, with change order number one, and upon approval with the original contract, we eliminated the 400 block of Cary Street, which we added back in with change order number three. We eliminated South Lion, or Lion Street, it's not South Lion, but Lion Street, and we eliminated Court Street, which was just a portion, just a sewer replacement, a couple hundred feet on Court Street, be in front of the Methodist Church there. So, upon review of where we stand with the contract, we've determined to add back in a portion of Lion Street, and that would be the portion, the Easterly portion, that was not, the water main is in significant need of repair. You may know for your longer timer people, that in the 90s, we had what was called the FEMA project, and that was our 90s deep freeze, I guess, and we received FEMA money to replace water mains, and so a portion of Lion Street's water main was replaced at that time. The Easterly portion that was not touched as part of that project still has an old water main, and in the road, if you've driven down it lately, is in terrible condition. So, we decided to add that portion of Lion Street back in because the rest of Lion is not so bad and utilities are not in need, so desperately in need of replacement. The other portion that we want to add back into the project, it was not in the C-3 project, it was in the C-1, C-2 project that was done in 2010, 2011. When I came here in 2011, we were at a point in the project that we did not have a very good contingency with the project, we just approved some change orders with, and we had a full year of construction to go with just a $20,000 contingency. So at that time, it was decided that something needed to be removed. Also, back then, we did not have DWRF, drinking water revolving funds money as part of that project, we just had the SRF, sanitary sewer revolving fund, and so, with that, and additionally, the downtown was extremely impacted by, by the construction in 2010, we decided it was recommended that we remove West, or West Spruce between Ashman and Osborne Boulevard from the C-1 and C-2 project. That gave us a better contingency for that project and eliminated construction at that time. And, and that project currently only has water main, it was only designed to replace the 2-inch water main, and you might recall, two years ago during winter, there was a leak in that water main, froze and broke, and did a lot of damage, and water damage in the merch basement. So, with that, that's what we determined that now would be a good time with, knowing that we have plenty of contingency in the C-3 project, it would be a good idea to add back in the West Spruce that was eliminated from the C-1, C-2 project. And so, before you is change order with Baco. C-2AE did a, did a cost estimate just based on what was removed from the project, although they will be needing to do some, some redesign for Lion because of stopping the project short, and with spruce, some things may have changed, we want to televise the sewer just to make sure that it's still in okay condition, or just confirm that we don't need to do anything with that sewer before we put a brand-new road over it. So, we will be looking, doing our due diligence with those items, but we have put together a change order, and the amount of the proposed change order in total is, sorry, $597,385.50 to add those two portions back into the project.
I think I have just a couple questions, and maybe other Commissioners do too. The sidewalks on, and then, you're talking about the first block from Ashman going toward the Doctor's Building and Penny's Kitchen.
Yep.
The sidewalks on the north, on the south side are relatively new, so are we talking sidewalk at all, or are you just talking just roadway?
We are talking sidewalk and curb and gutter as needed.
As needed, okay.
So, it'll be a big portion of it, we might be able to get with, along the Avery Center there, maybe there's some sidewalk that doesn't need to be replaced because the water main is on the, in the center, pretty much in the center of the road.
Okay.
But we do need to put in new curb and gutter, and there's a fair amount of sidewalk that's in bad condition, especially the drive out of Oka Street.
Yes, oh yeah, no question.
Terrible, we'd like to also relocate that too, push it west a little bit to keep, get the cars away from the building, and so, we'll be doing some realignment with driveways when we do the road restoration.
So you're talking to the property owners, including, what, Penny's Kitchen?
We'll be talking to them immediately because they will have a special assessment, be putting back in a special assessment that they didn't have when we removed it from the project originally.
Okay, I know there's been a lot of water breaks in that, in those areas the last several years, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a note for the Commission. As City Engineer Basista explains within the included materials, at this point, there's approximately $350,000 remaining in contingency funds after this change order, if it's approved.
After this one? Okay. That's good. Okay. Do we have a motion? No, Commissioner Lynn.
Mayor, I saw moved the City Commission authorize the City Manager to execute change order number five to the Baco contract for CSO C-3 in the amount of $597,385.50, I don't know where the 50 cents come from, adding a portion of Lion Street and West Spruce into the project.
Support.
It's been moved to support it. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Osterhout.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Vospos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under the City Manager's report, would provide for the approval of budget amendments associated with the 11-month budget review. On this matter, Finance Director Collins is planning to present to the Commission, and as a note of clarity, these budget amendments are intended to complement those that were adopted by the City Commission at its last meeting, and are more strategic and refined in nature.
Evening, Kristen.
Hello. We just met last meeting and went through all the funds, so I didn't want to go through all that again, I just wanted to cover the very basic ones, the little bit that was left over, and that would include the street funds and the parking deck, and I know you love this. The street funds, the street fund work that's in the general fund was fine, we covered that, we had adequate funding, but the major street and local street were the ones that were of particular concern. There were some projects that most of the guys would be working on, and so I was unsure at that time how much work they would be doing on these streets, the cost allocation. When I took a look at it, just to be on the safe side, and that, that's what I'm doing here, it's not necessarily these funds are going to be spent, I took a look over the past three years and just did a year-to-date paration to see, and then extrapolate forward just to guesstimate. The major street, I'm suggesting $67,600 more for operating costs in the budget, and that would require no additional transfers into the fund, because the fund balance is sufficient to cover that. The local street, however, was requiring more, it's $125,800 more than originally budgeted or revised budget, and with the fund balance of just $84,000 at the last year-end, I think we're going to need some of that support that we had originally budgeted coming from road contingency. So, I would ask that that budget be increased, and that the road contingency go back up to a transfer of $265,000. Are there any questions on the street funds? Okay. The only other fund that I was concerned about was the parking deck. The only other fund that I was concerned about was the parking deck. And DDA Director Nepper and I looked it over and came up with some year-end estimates for each line item. And when we got done with that, we figured that we would need an increase to the operating budget of $13,100. So that did not require any additional support because it was within the fund balance that we estimated at budget time. I was, I skipped over one, and I apologize. There was another one that Director Nepper and I talked about, and that was our capital projects that the DDA is doing, and that's the facades grant. And there were a couple of minor overages in the projects, one of them for $2,400, and the other one, it was actually $50, but I rounded up to hundreds. So we would ask that those bud, capital project budgets be increased for a total of $2,500, and then the offsetting increase would be an increase to the property owner's contribution. So that requires no additional city funds, but if you could review these budget revisions and authorize them if you see fit. Any questions on the parking deck or the DDA projects? Okay.
Thank you, Christian.
You're welcome.
Maybe the City Manager at this point could maybe just explain briefly the winter that we had in the streets, and we know we didn't have to plow as heavily as we did the previous two years because of the amount of snow, so we actually maybe didn't, people think we didn't spend as much money because certainly we didn't have the plowing, but where do we actually end up? Do we, no?
Thank you, Mayor. So the activities of the Department of Public Works, when they perform those activities, the costs associated with those are spread across various funds. And I think as Finance Director Collins has mentioned before, this can be highly variable based on seasonal activities. And because of the lighter winter, some of these costs were more heavily weighted towards the general fund than would typically be the case. However, with the aggregate costs that have been incurred by DPW over this past winter, there were savings as far as reduced winter maintenance costs. That's reflected, I believe, in the reduced amount of road contingency funds that had been planned to be sent from the local streets fund, excuse me, from road contingency to the local streets fund, and also some reduced expenses in stock and equipment, and also reduced expenses in gasoline and fuel purchases. So overall, there's been a net benefit to the city because of the lighter winter.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Gage?
If I understand what you're saying, we still had to pay roughly the same amount in salaries because it doesn't matter about how much snow is out there, you still had the truck on the street. Our only savings was in maintenance?
There was some, thank you Commissioner Gage, some reduced expenses as far as overtime. The base salaries are spread across the various funds based on activities, so the savings are reflected for winter maintenance within the overtime as well as the charges that are applied for the use of equipment and then for the fuel purchases as well.
Okay. Thank you. And that was, that was just something that he was not prepared to answer, but I asked him if he was able to do that, and then our City Manager was able to do that, so we appreciate that. Because people, people do wonder, you know, and I've had a number of people ask that, you know, because of the light winter, how much money does the city save? Well, you can save some, but you don't save large amounts because of the amount of staffing that you have to have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Commissioner Gage, you'd like to make a motion?
I move the City Manager's recommendation.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
That concludes the City Manager's report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is the status reports. City Manager?
Item A, under status reports, Director Nepper from the DDA was planning to make a presentation on the mural project.
Welcome back.
Let's have a quick video. A quick video to show, many of you may have seen it already, but I thought it'd be a great opportunity for people to watch it at home.
While you're doing that, I see Gene Tubman is also here.
Yes.
And we thank you, Gene, for your efforts and work in this area.
Gene Tubman and David Ripley are both the artists that will be working on two of our four murals, and very excited to be working with them.
And Dave is also here.
Well, it saved my, it saved, two weeks ago, I typed in the wrong address and it popped up the same one. It is patroncity.com/suemurals. How it should work. So a few weeks ago, I came to the City Commission and gave you a little bit of an overview of our draft website. It is now live. It's only been going for just under, just about a week. And we're at $2,570 out of a $16,000 goal. Every day, there is money coming in. We've had checks come in already from credit cards from Nashville, Tennessee, Florida, all over the place, so.
Can I ask you, if people aren't, you know, computer literate and don't want to go through that process, you'll take individual checks?
Absolutely. Check cash, and that could be sent to the Downtown Development Authority, 511 Ashman Street, Suite 103. It's on, on the website. We've actually done flyers as well, so that's going to, those flyers are out there, and we'll have it in the newspaper. But we absolutely can take check, and we actually just enter it for you on the website so that you get access to all the different goodies. So for example, there is the different donation levels here on the right side. It says if you give $10 or more, you've helped prepare the walls, $25, you get paint and brushes, you've helped us get paint and brushes. If you give 50, you get a postcard in the mail, 100, a mural mug, a mural t-shirt. At $500, you get a plaque with your name on it for your help. And then $1,000 or more, you get a VIP ticket and a print of one of the murals of your choices, a ticket to unveiling ceremony. So we do have a video to watch, it's six minutes long. Hopefully, that's not too bad. And, and I don't know if I have sound. There we go.
City of Michigan, home to 15,000 people, home to a wide variety of artists here in the Sioux, but one of the things we're lacking is public art. We actually have a few sculptures, we have a few outdoor murals here and there, but we are really lacking that cohesive celebration of our, of our community. We've chosen four mural locations in partnership with four downtown property owners.
For my business, the building is old, 1926, so it needs some sprucing up. I think this will, along with brightening up the downtown local area, it will also be a real asset to my business.
My goal for this project is to bring a kind of a visual unity for Lake Spirit State University and Sioux St. Marie. And so the mural bridges a lot of the imagery, and also I want it to be more vibrant, kind of show a little bit of vitality that the university is kind of fostering nowadays.
Because that wall is facing the locks, I think it's the perfect place. We are 1668 Whinery, we try to tie in with the history, so the first thing on my mind was to do a mural and tie in Father Marquette and his arrival on the St. Mary's River as that ties into 1668.
But this is important to us because we feel we can make an impact by painting Father Marquette coming into the Sioux. It can be something that will last for years and years to come, and it helps us preserve our heritage. We're also gearing up for the 350th anniversary of the Sioux in two years, and thought this would make an excellent addition to that, those festivities.
For the community, it'll show our interest and our support in the early American history in the Sioux St. Marie area and to carry it on to our next generations.
This mural is one of the most interesting ones out of the four that we're doing because we don't know what it is yet. And the outside of this wall was a mural at one point, over 50 years ago. No one remembers what it was. It was like the grandfather of the current owners, and they were just children when they saw the mural and got tired, somebody got tired of it, they covered up with a little plywood siding. So the plan for this wall is the whole thing will be cleaned up, taken down to the, to the brick and plaster, and the upper portion, you can just barely see, has some mural. We've heard some discussion that it might be a canoe or something like that, but it's going to be a surprise mural, and your funding will go towards supporting rehabbing this wall and bringing that mural back to life.
We're cleaning up a lot of buildings, and we'll give people something to look at when they come to town. It's going to be fun.
One of the biggest things that you can do to help support this project, we only have 30 days to raise a 50% matching grant, and we've been awarded a 50% match from the state. Our total goal is $32,000. That's going to take care of rehabbing the walls, preparing the surfaces for the murals, and paying the artists, the local Michigan artists that we're hiring to do the work. And our portion will be just $16,000. Your pledge of anywhere from $1 to $10,000 will go for helping us raise that goal of 16,000. You pledge with your credit card or debit card online, you won't be charged unless we reach our goal of $16,000. The only way that we're able to have this project happen is with the support of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. They've been a huge partner in Sioux St. Marie. We ask that you pledge and then share with your friends, your family, and your acquaintances across the state, across the nation, to help us reach our goal of $16,000.
Very good. Excellent.
The organization that helped us make the video, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the videographer couldn't quite fit in all the detail, and so you saw Les Townsend at Island Books and Crafts, and then it showed his wall, and that wall is the fourth mural, which will be a big painting of the Edmund Fitzgerald over 100 feet long, the night of the Edmund Fitzgerald's wreck. Les has mentioned this to a few people. There was a huge windstorm in the Sioux, and it actually blew a chunk of his front window off, and so there's a pretty good connection between the Edmund Fitzgerald and Island Books and Crafts there on the corner. So the only other things I was going to mention is we would love to have both individual and organization support from anybody here in this room as well as across the community. We have about $300 or $400 per day that we need to bring in to hit our goal. We have a lot of people calling, a lot of people, groups of friends that are getting money together. Just today, Grand Travis Ophthalmology called me and said downtown their office and said that they were going to be hosting a fundraiser, bringing all the different medical clinics that they knew in to help raise money. So we do have a lot of good momentum. We have just about three and a half weeks left to hit our goal of 16,000, which will be matched by 16,000 by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. That funding is, averages about $8,000 a mural, and that's, there's a lot of work that goes into preparing the surfaces so that things don't fall off or, you know, fall apart within a few years. These are going to be long-lasting, high-quality pieces of art. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Tordy?
Just a comment. I just wanted to let you know that Steve and I at Harmony Health Foods, we are going to pledge $500 towards the mural.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very welcome.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Bauer?
I do have a question about the potential Alpha mural, because if no one really knows what's under there, I mean, what if it's, say, and I would imagine the possibility would exist, that it would be an advertisement of some sort for something that no longer exists?
Certainly.
What if it's an advertisement for like Marlboro or something?
No.
You know?
When we first pitched the concept and put the video together, a lot of those things hadn't quite crossed my mind, and so I've been spending a lot of time with Jennifer Grecelis and Stathia Grecelis at the Alpha and at Zorbas, and they do recall a little bit of, they've been thinking about it and do recall a little bit of the fact that it does have, I think, some sort of kind of a Native American theme to it. But one of the things that Jennifer is thinking at the, at Zorbas is that she would hold some sort of contest. Once everything is pulled off, then have various artists look at what's there and say, okay, how can we take what's there and make it amazing? Whether it's adding a new background or refreshing the art that's there, or perhaps even redoing the whole thing based on, you know, how old it is. But the goal is hopefully to, if there's something unique and interesting about what was painted there all those years ago, we'll hopefully kind of bring that back to life and add some elements of, I think one of the things that Jennifer said at Zorbas is the word avant-garde, which I think means, you know, a little bit of, more of a unique and creative twist to the artwork. So I think that'll be a unique mural when it's done, but it's going to be interesting once those boards come off. And they probably have the biggest amount of investment that they have to do on their end to prepare for the mural, to really redo all of that plaster that is on those walls, so.
Any other comments? We certainly wish you good luck. I'm sure a number of folks in the audience and the Commission will be participating, if not all.
Thank you.
We all would be so. And we'll get the word out. That's excellent. I think you'll make it. Anyone else? Questions? Okay, we are, anything else?
That concludes the status report section. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We are into item number six, matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Yes, sir. Oh. Come on up here. You shouldn't have went so far back there. Who's that?
I just remembered getting scolded a little bit for not thinking about some of our events that are coming up because there's so many other things going on. It is a nonstop stream of events, and Linda's not here. I think she's at a conference, I had to cover for her. But this Friday, of course, is Engineers Day. We have the entire Sioux locks going with Engineers Day as well as the Vietnam Veterans Commemorative Ceremony. The rotary stage that was purchased in part by the DDA Rotary Club and the Visitors Bureau is going to be actually shipped over by water to the Army Corps or to the, inside the Sioux locks to be set up for the Vietnam Memorial, so that'll be our first time trying out the stage. And then, of course, we have all the other activities going on here at City Hall, so that's going to be nine to four on Friday. It's going to be a huge event for Engineers Day. Saturday, tremendous amount of events, including a live concert for the McCready Strong fundraiser at the Farmers Market, I think at 1:00 somewhere in there. Band Brooks is going to be playing. And then the very following week, July 1st, is our Second Annual Slash Nashman Car Cruise. I believe there's already 400 cars signed up, if not more. It's going to be a constant, nonstop traffic jam downtown.
Slash Nash.
Slash Nashman. I've heard everything, I've even heard, I don't, I hope they go through it. Steve, maybe I shouldn't give away the surprise, but, okay. There's cool stuff going on that businesses will be doing downtown that are really unique and connected to getting the people in the cars, having a good time. So that'll be going on. There's also a fundraiser. There's $5 buttons available at many stores downtown to raise money for a dog park, a future dog park. It's not necessarily locked in place, but Don Kelly was the fellow who started the car cruise last year. He passed away suddenly right after the first car cruise happened, and his dream was to bring Sioux St. Marie a dog park. So he has some of his family and friends that are raising money to put an account until at such time as we figure out how to do a dog park and get one built. So those buttons are available for $5 for the Slash Nashman Cruise, and then, of course, July 4th parades, 7:00 PM fireworks, and then right after that is Gus Macker, Rondi Wu in the Sioux, and I don't know, tons of other events.
Yep. I'm glad you didn't specifically mention it, but you said Saturday, the International Bridge Walk?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, starting at 9:00. Traditional type thing, so it's a great time. What else? The fourth, we won't meet until the fifth, which would be a Tuesday again, so the fourth would have already happened, so. You had, I had a bunch of those things, and I'm glad you covered them instead of me. That's excellent.
Well, you can embellish.
We have a question, maybe. Commissioner Gage?
For Slash Nash, do you have to register your car?
No, there is actually no registration. We do encourage people to buy a button just to support the fundraiser, but otherwise you just, how it works is, I think it starts at 7:00, and you drive whatever car you have down to Ashman Street and hop in line and drive them back and forth.
The other, the other comment I wanted to make is that I heard that the Canadian side is so excited about our Slash Nash that they're planning to have a fireworks celebration in that later that night. Just an honor.
Right. Well, and they, I've been keeping an eye, they're not only doing that, but they might have stolen our idea a little bit. I just heard they're doing a Queen Street Cruise for the first time in a long time, so.
Queen Street Cruise? That's neat, too.
A lot of interesting connected events.
On the same, on the same night?
Absolutely. No, I think, I'm not sure of the Queen Street Cruise night off the top of my head, but if you check out the Queen Street but if you check out the Queen Street Facebook page, I think, they have a lot of their events featured there for all the events on their site.
We have several of those folks come over here, and then several of our folks come over there for different cruises, you know? Be great. Thank you. Did you miss any? I think you covered them all. Thank you. Commissioner Bauer?
Actually, one thing along those lines is that the Fourth of July Parade has been moved back to night.
The original, yes. Nighttime, 8:00? Is it 8:00? Lineup starts at 7:00. The original location is back to the Ashman area, back behind Kmart, I believe. Okay? And that will be on the Fourth, on that Monday? What was the date on the car?
The first.
The first of July, which is Friday night. Okay? A week from, it's going to be Friday. Commissioner Osterhout?
Yes, also want to point out, Mr. Mayor, that the Sioux St. Marie now has a mobile app available as well. So you can get on out to the App Store and download the city mobile app as well. Talks about places of dining, has a local map in there as well for the different points of interest and everything else as well.
Is that SiouxCity.com?
Nope. No, this is, this goes to, you have to go to the mobile app store. I believe it's just the Apple, that, just the Apple, and then you just go to the App Store, and then you can download it there, so.
Okay. Excellent. Free of charge?
It's free of charge, and it has a lot of good information on it.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yep, I was just going to say on that note.
Anyone else? Commissioner Twardy?
Are we on commission comments?
Yes.
Okay. Because I didn't hear you move to the next item, so. The only thing that I wanted to just note about was the Summer Solstice Girls on the Run Celebration that took place on Saturday night down at Sherman Park. This was the seventh annual, and this was by far the biggest one. In fact, I didn't see you even there, Oliver Turner, and apparently on Facebook later that evening, I knew that you were there, but it was pretty crazy, wasn't it? For being 84 degrees out to run a 5K in 84 degrees, it was fairly toasty. But it was really exciting to see that organization and that group continue to get bigger and bigger. I just, I love the idea of giving strength back to girls through, you know, physical exercise, and it's just a great organization, and of course, I also sponsor it, but, so that was a great night.
Great. Anyone else have any comments, commissioner comments? Commissioner Gage?
So one of the biggest things that I get phone calls about as a commissioner is the lack of a movie theater in town. And I am absolutely happy to announce that the Lake State Art Center is now showing feature movies on a somewhat recurring regular basis. The next one coming up is actually going to be this coming Saturday. I forget what we're watching. I think it's Batman versus Superman. I forget. It's on Facebook. Check it out on Facebook and online at the Art Center. But it's not, it's not a full movie theater. It's not perfect, but it's a good stopgap measure until we get another movie theater.
And the sound is absolutely outstanding in that theater, so it'd be, now, it's not every Saturday, but there are certain Saturdays, so it's covered on Lake State's website, and...
So check out the website. Check out Facebook.
And maybe it's on our Sioux Sioux app?
Yeah.
Would be a good idea, eh? Is that something you just put on? I don't know how that works, so.
Right. We can certainly investigate that.
Okay.
If meant as possible.
Excellent. Commissioner, oh, man.
Since Commissioner Gage brought that up, there's been a lot of rumors that someone is looking to put a movie theater in here. Have you heard anything, city manager, at all?
Thank you, Commissioner Lynn. I have not heard anything about any movie theater.
So it's all basically so far rumors, which...
That's correct.
I hope somebody does it.
I do know that there has been somebody poking around, I'm sorry. I do know that somebody's been poking around, looking at property and stuff.
Take away my thunder. Okay. Commissioner Lynn?
Your Honor, I was so moved that we adjourned this meeting.
Support.
Hold your favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close your hands. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.